County Works Session, it's about three or four minutes after the hour. Seated to my immediate rights, I write as Commissioner Sharon Bolus, I'm Commissioner Harvey. We've excused Commissioner Faur for the first part of this meeting. And item number one is discussion and interaction for the approval of the minutes for the Commission work session held on on October the 14th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion inasmuch as the next item on the agenda was the Sheriff's Office update, but our sheriff has needed to postpone this meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to saunter until or at or around 1:30.
So moved.
A second roll call, Commissioner Bolus.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey's aye, we'll see you back in about 1:00.
Scott has been working closely with City John Call and Scott Hess in their planning department. So Scott, I'll let you take it from here and just provide an update on where we're at.
Great, okay, Commissioners, as Sean said, we've been working with the city. This agreement is This agreement has gone to the city, come back, we discussed this, it's been quite some time ago. The input that we got from you was incorporated into this interlocal agreement, and it was sent back to North Ogden City, so what you have before you is the most recent draft with a signature. They're ready, the city's ready to move forward with this if you're comfortable with it. So we want to present this to you quickly, so I can just point out the changes.
Go ahead.
If you go page one, everything is saved exactly the same. Page two, paragraph three, towards the bottom there. You'll see, what you may remember is that the county was looking for the city park to be.
Jennifer Sorenson.
Sorry.
The city was, well, what the county was looking for was the city park to be constructed and open to the public within ten years. Well, that's what was in there to begin with. The city has come back with five years. Well, actually, the county wanted ten years, but the city has come back with.
They would like to have it in five years instead of ten.
Yes, well, the county would, so initially, we said.
Oh, that's right.
What they've done is broken it up and said, okay, five years with an option, or you can see in that paragraph, for an additional five.
Sounds like ten to me.
It is ten. But they want a little bit of flexibility there, so five years.
Are they okay, five with five?
Yes, this language came from them, so what you see underlined there is brand new, or what's highlighted there.
Let's have you make all the presentations and Commissioners, you go ahead and respond in their efforts of time, if you will.
Good idea.
Okay, on page three, paragraph five. They've, the city's come back with, to us, with just a little bit more flexibility within this paragraph. What they've added here is the restrooms and drinking fountain may be closed and turned off seasonally on the same schedule that other parks are that are operated by the city. So that was not there, but they've added that language. In paragraph nine, same page, page three. They, what's been added is, in that, within that sub-paragraph there, including restrooms, facilities, and drinking fountain. And again, we've updated that paragraph to reflect the change in that five years, that five-year timeframe. Go to page four. No changes, sorry, there's no pages on page four. And page five, one simple change, the administrator of the unit will be the mayor. So that spot right there was left blank, but they've chosen the mayor to be the administrator of this agreement. And that is it. Some very minor changes to the document that was presented to you last time. If you're comfortable with this, I can move forward and put this on the commission agenda.
Great. Commissioner Bollos, your comments or questions?
So instead of ten, we're, we'll give him five plus five.
It was originally ten years, but the county preferred five. And they've asked for the addition of, an option to come back to you and ask for an additional five, if necessary.
That's all right.
Okay.
I mean, my calculator says that's ten, but it's fine.
Commissioner Farrar, you're good at this stuff.
Yeah. Five plus five equals ten, which time I counted, but it's, you know, it is what it is.
Nothing to fall on your sword about?
No, no, let's just do it. We, I mean, how long are we gonna discuss this little piece of property out there?
Well, it gets it off our rolls, and it's just another island that, perfect.
So I, no, I'm good with it.
Okay, great. That's three of us.
Hey, thank you.
Do we, does it, I don't know, Mr. Crockett's not able to join us today, but I don't know if that goes on an agenda, or, it probably should. And so we probably ought to just put that on a consent item, I think, with the way we are feeling right here.
Okay, you'll see that hopefully next week, if not next week after.
Super, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate your work on that, Scott.
I'm sure.
Great. Well, let's take a moment to change out the room here.
You know, it's Monday, if you can smell popcorn.
Yeah, smell popcorn and the fire alarm goes off.
Is that what it is? I didn't know the fire alarm.
Two, two, two Mondays in a row, where they've popped the batch, because there's the smoke alarm right above, and the steam goes right up to it.
That's funny.
Sets it off.
I didn't hear it.
Yeah, it was about eight thirty this morning. We were out at eight fifteen.
That's funny.
Or sorry. About nine fifteen this morning.
Boy, this month's about gone, isn't it?
Can you believe it?
Wow, no.
It's so crazy.
This whole year.
I know. This isn't budget. I think so. Layout downwards. Um, let's see, so I think if yeah, change started, yeah. So it should be. It did, it's crossing that over, yeah. Well, you're understanding that, so. We can change this.
I've thought about it, but I'm not sure the best way to do it, 'cause you know, that it makes sense if we want that in the center for it to be a circle.
It's hard for you to have some of it.
Yeah. Oh, also, Chad, the animal services is not on measure anymore.
Than just.
Yeah, are we muted right now?
We're expecting.
We're, we're waiting for the Nordic Village, Ashlyn, Chris, Crockett, Lauren Thomas, Scott Park, Sean Wilkinson, Linnell Jensen, Stephanie Ebert, Brennan Brown, and Brooke Cole. For those of you online listening, we'll start that session in just a moment. As we're waiting for those people who are on the agenda to come into the room.
Are you okay? Cortland, in conjunction with that property that Ogden City wants to drill the core sample on?
Oh, yeah.
Cortland said, well, you, it's fine, but can you sign a license agreement? So if you'll sign that, I'll get that to Ogden City. And then they can have at it, right? Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. You know, I wanna just tell you. Uh, let's see if I can find that. Jessica Clark, no.
I got a call on the animal shelter Friday.
You did?
Someone who read the article at the Standard and said that he was grateful for my support. I thought we said.
I got a, we got a letter, did you see the letter from Craig Call at the Utah Land Use Institute? I thought that was really nice. Sure has confidence in our team.
Our planning team is fairly well-known.
Did you have, did you see that, Sean?
I haven't seen that.
Can I just read that to you really quick? He said, this is from Craig Call, the executive director of the Utah Land Use Institute, he says, having attended all twenty-five of the annual conferences of the Utah Land Use Institute, I believe I am qualified to evaluate the content and effectiveness of our sessions. I think your presentation, speaking to Weber County as a team on starter homes in Weber County, was the best we've had in our history. Your comments and thoughts are engaging, and right on, right on with today's vital issues. As you could tell from the audience engagement, you had full attention, more than a hundred and seventy individuals, and forty-five online. We'll have that session available in a week or so, so those who want to see that session can go to the Utah Land Use Institute. And that'll be great. Many thanks for the participation. We were well-served by your participation, your candor and unique perspective. Each member of the panel provided. That's pretty good, it's amazing, yep, that's, that's. Glad to hear that. Hi, Linnell, welcome. Good, we have still a couple more people that we're waiting to see.
It's, I'm like, buying like all this one.
Ashlyn, I wanna see if they're ready to go, we're waiting. Oh, you know what, I think we're just a couple minutes early still, though.
Right on.
Welcome.
Hi there.
How you doing?
Great, good to see you guys.
Great, we're, we're at item number four on our agenda, which is the discussion regarding the Nordic Village CRA, Ms. Russell, Stephanie Russell, we've already introduced those who will be here today, and so in anticipation of your arrival, and so we welcome you. Go ahead with the presentation, man.
So Commissioners, I just, this is mainly an update on where we're at, on the creation of the CRA and some significant dates that are coming up. Just really wanted to give you a preview of some things that are coming. We have, all of us completed meeting with all the districts as it relates to the interlocal agreements with the districts. The project area plan and budget is completely in line with our new policy. So the petitioner is only asking for fifty percent at fifteen years from all districts that are participating. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that it is completely in line with our new policy. We've got a couple more meetings, we still need to meet with the fire district, and then we will have additional meetings with Weaver Basin, as well as the school district to get our interlocals on their board meetings for vote. We'll have all of those interlocals executed and ready for you guys in December to do a final vote and create the CRA. So just wanted to make sure you didn't have any questions before I move completely forward and, and get everything executed and, and these meetings scheduled.
Commissioner Farrar, go ahead.
Do you have a cap, we have a cap on that?
We do.
Do you know what it is?
I do, just give me a second.
Just roughly.
Yeah, it's roughly fifty million, but let me, let me give you the exact.
Just like, I like the fifty percent.
That's.
When was the last time we've had a fifty?
We haven't had a fifty percent since I've been here, no.
So one of the other things that I'd like to also talk to is that, as this relates to their project, their project has about a forty-five million dollar public infrastructure lift, if I'm not mistaken, Brooke. And so part of this tax increment finance, if not all of it, to be honest with you, will be going towards that public infrastructure lift. And our, our team has worked really hard with this project over three years to come up with a really good solution in that area for public infrastructure, and as well as creating it, and a really unique type of environment at, at Nordic Valley. This is something that has been in the pipeline for three years, you, you as Commissioners have met several times with the developers and with the property owners, and Sean's team has been working with them on a weekly basis for almost three years. So this is a project that's been a long time coming. We've really vetted this project out, and we're very excited about the possibilities that it will bring as it relates to development on that, on that mountain. The additions that it'll bring for tourism, as well as local, local sales tax will be incredible for, for that whole area. So
That would help.
Wanted to.
That would help.
Make sure you guys had a, up-to-date information on where we're at with the process, and to keep you out for some of these meetings that will be, will be coming up to finish executing the documents, the interlocals, and putting both the PID and the CRA in place.
Brooke, just, I think, for the, those who may not be familiar with what infrastructure is, forty-five million is a lot of money for infrastructure, can you just give us an overview of what that infrastructure is, or what, what you'd be doing for the forty-five million?
Absolutely, absolutely. With that infrastructure, we'll start the smaller things, and that was being public trails. Continuing the public trails that you all have done up there in the past, and making the connections to that part of the valley. Here, there's, making that connection from there all the way down to one sixty-two in the backbone that is going along one sixty-two, so there's public trails that are gonna be going, and multipurpose public trails that are be going in to connect that whole neighborhood. Secondly, is a lot of road improvements. Getting into that area, they're off-site, so roundabouts or other traffic devices that the county engineer deems fit to be able to facilitate the traffic that's up there currently today, that's not being facilitated, and also in the future, which includes some road overlayments as well. When we come and put pipes and stuff in the ground, and Weaver County's right-of-ways will have to redo quite a bit of those roads as well, 'cause they're not in good shape up there. We'll also be building new roads to the new county standard that has been required of us in the form-based code, much wider right-of-ways, parking, and other things like that within the resort area on the public streets.
Yeah, 'cause parking's always been a little issue up there at that, in the wintertime. Almost to the point of being unsafe.
Yeah, so the form-based, the form-based code specifies what those new roadway requirements are, and they're much larger and much bigger than what is up there currently today. So we'll be building roads with that, and then we'll also be building public water and sewer to not only support the Nordic Village area, but also some of the surrounding areas as well, we'll be able to take on capacity from other, either failing sources or other smaller property owners around us as well.
Right.
And Commissioners, I want to reiterate, just for everyone's purposes and for the public's purpose, when we are setting up these types of finance mechanisms, this is not coming out of general taxpayer dollars. This is coming out of the districts that are created, and this district is created exclusively on the Nordic Valley property. So that's how these initiatives are funded. Tax increment finance is the increment that is generated from the development. If the development wasn't gonna happen, the increment would not exist. So that's why the districts that are participating with us are willing to do that, because they can see the incredible return on investment that they're going to get. The school district alone is, is going to get around eighty million dollars over a span of about twenty-five years. That's a lot of, a lot of tax increment that this project's gonna generate. Additionally, with the public infrastructure district, that is also not something that comes out of taxpayer dollars. That is, those are, are bonds that are taken out by the developer, paid for by the developer through a military that is leveraged onto their own properties. So these are, these are finance mechanisms that are, are very risk-free for the, for the county, and puts the onus of the investment and the, and the payback onto the developer and onto that district that's created, when we create these areas of opportunity.
Terrific. Questions, Commissioner Bollos?
I appreciate that explanation, Stephanie, I think it can be confusing.
It is, and, and they work hand-in-hand, and, and we do get a lot of questions about how they work. It's just really important for me to help everybody understand that these are, these are put into place to spur development, and they make good development projects better, but they don't make or break development projects, we don't do it that way in Weaver County. It makes good development projects better.
Appreciate them.
Great, any questions from anyone else in the room regarding this?
Well, you can look forward to seeing quite a few interlocals on your work session. We have, we have a schedule, and Ashlyn will send the, the schedule out to you guys, so you have an idea of what's coming up.
So when do you think this, about, will this appear on the commission agenda?
Um, we've got some public notices we have to do, so the final vote for the CRA will be in December. And we'll wrap up the interlocals with the districts in the next two months. We do have a public meeting for the PID, which is on November twentieth.
Those public meeting notices will all be published on the Utah Public Meeting Notice website.
Absolutely, yeah.
Great, all right. If there's no other questions, thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. We're gonna need you to settle down next time. Here we are again, ahead of our schedule, and so I'll entertain a motion to Saunter until about two fifteen.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye, we'll Saunter, thank you.
Sean.
Yes.
Yes.
I have a motion in the second to cease to saunter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great, we're on item number five, which is a discussion on a request to modify the approved Winston Park development agreement to refine certain provisions. Charlie Ewert is not here. Rick Grover, Sean Wilkinson, Liam Keogh, Gary Myers not here, Chad Meyerhopper is out in the hallway. And we have the gentleman from Winston Park. Thank you very much. Sean, I'm gonna ask you to go ahead. Well, Rick, why don't you start, please?
So the app kind of would like to get some feedback from you guys on possibly amending some changes to their development. So they wanted to just make some time to see what your thoughts are about this, so might be good to...
We have a presentation ready for us?
I've got, you know, just kind of a something here you can panel this with us. This is kind of just a, obviously a diagram of the phase two that we've been working on. And we've been working with Charlie just to go through and refine some of the points of the development agreement. And as part of the development agreement, the kind of the twin home area, we have in there in a development agreement to be owner occupied. And we certainly see the value in that, especially when you have a subdivision like you have, it's turning out to be a really nice subdivision. I brought Justin Tolman here with me, he's a builder. And he, we worked with the Tolmans on some lots in phase one. And they, they, they obviously...
Justin's got a good name.
Oh, is that your name?
No, but I know you.
Do you?
Anyway.
Anyways, Justin's building company is interested in the twin homes. And as we talked about this area of the subdivision, you know, it's obviously my responsibility as a developer to kind of go through the development agreement, some of those things that we talked about. And we were wanting to get some feedback to see if you'd be open to kind of modify the owner occupied to have it be more optional or have a percentage of those twin homes to be rented and owner occupied, you know? And that's really what we're here to, to ask and, and discuss, I guess.
So there are 24 units total?
Yeah, and so as you look at the 24 over there, there's like three kind of private drives that come in. There's one at the bottom, one in kind of in the middle, and then one at the top. We as, Ebor and I have really been saying there's three eight packs. And you know, some of the ones that are, let's say closer to 1800 South, you know, maybe those would be, make the most sense if they would be optional in terms of renting. Whereas maybe the bottom eight pack would be, you know, where we've talked about those neighboring properties, maybe that would be, make more sense to have those owner occupied.
So right now is it all 100% owner occupied?
Yeah, 100%, owner occupied. And so, you know, I guess your thoughts and then Charlie, did you, did you have, as I've been through our discussions?
Yeah, sorry I'm late.
Not off the press, I'm sure.
Yeah, I was putting out a fire. That's what was off the press. If I can guide your attention commissioners, there's a couple of proposed changes to the development agreement. Now you guys have approved this development agreement, Wade has yet to sign it, it's not recorded yet. So I think there's some, some small tweaks he's asking for. I don't know that I have a strong opinion one way or the other. I just wanted to walk through, walk you through what these are. So if you turn back to page eight, what are the first changes? Basically, what we have been putting as a, as a general template language in all of our development agreements is that the developer agrees to plant trees of certain quantities so that we get a good tree canopy in these subdivisions, where this is right next door to Winston Phase One, and that one only has two trees per lot frontage. Wade's asked that we consider that. And, and what I put here, this will result in just a little bit more trees than Winston will have, but not that much more, that they'll have one tree for every 30 feet of lot frontage. And they can choose where on the lot that those trees go. And then if you turn over to page...
I guess, I guess on that point, just what we found in phase one with the driveway and then the utilities, it seems to be aesthetically really nice to have, you know, the, the two trees per lot. It seems to be by the time you get everything in there, it, you know, it's a nice addition to that in terms of a balance.
So that's that change on page eight. Page nine, just a really brief clarification, as far as the smart watering controller goes, Wade was a little concerned that, that meant that we've got to actually install sprinkler valves and we want to make sure they're not required to do that. They just need to have a smart controller there plugged into 110 volt. Beyond that, yards can come much later if needed. Okay, next up. Okay, page 11. One-story buildings, this is on the patio homes. The previous version said no steps, this one says one step. And then the next one down, the highlighted, no side, this is the owner occupied versus rental occupied on page 11. If you guys are comfortable making that change. And then last but not least, all right, at the very last page, fencing, Wade Neger, Wade Neger, we're looking at some alternative fence styles. They find this, found this, is it Rhino Rock? Rhino Rock fencing, which we actually have that picture in at least one other development agreement, if not more than that, we've...
That's similar to the stuff we just saw down in Vineyard, isn't it?
Yep, quite similar. That was the composition materials. I voted this cement. Okay, those are the changes. Any questions about any of them or your desires for any of them?
No, I know, I do have a couple. I know that, I don't know what the, can you explain to us why you want to go to one step instead of having a ground level on the senior homes?
Yeah, Justin, I want to just share some of it.
Yeah, so with that phase and what we're observing is to get it up to the correct elevation, we're bringing in a lot of material and importing quite a bit. So in order to get down to native soil and virgin soil, we're gonna have to go deep. And so we want to be able to open that up to potentially have either a crawl space or something similar if we have to go super deep. Otherwise, you know, if we're able to go down a few feet and it's still native, slabs would work perfectly. But normally it's, it's pretty common to have at least one step off the front threshold before the walkway or vice versa.
With all due respect, it is with some, but the newer product doesn't have any. The stuff that I'm familiar with, that they've not, they've had a waiting list of people for down there in South Weaver, right off of Adams, the Parkway coming down there, all that stuff doesn't have a, they don't even have a quarter inch rise on any of it.
Yeah.
And they, that's product sold out so fast, they couldn't even, couldn't build them fast enough.
Yeah, we've done several similar and have across the Los Angeles front, and there's definitely an ease for it. I guess we're just looking at potentially even leaving that as an option if it's needed. But I mean, zero steps is very doable.
Yeah. Commissioners, before I turn the time over to either one of you, I think on this particular one, the two sticking points for me is the step and the other one is that I think we gave the density. This is a project that was bold, you remember it came to us three or four years ago. We gave them the bonus density, then we came back and give them the density. And I think having here, it matches some of the other things, I think having, when you're gonna have more, when you're gonna have this more density in this area that was allowed, that I think it follows some of the other things we've done with regards to our attainable housing and, and keeping with owner occupied units. Of the other things, I don't think I have a problem, but I'm, those are the two things that I would like to see remaining in the agreement. But Commissioner Bolos, I'll go to you next.
Yeah, I agree with you on owner occupied, I'd like to see them all stay owner occupied. The step, I, I do, I do, you know, the product you're talking about, it's very popular right now. My mother's concerns, Commissioner Harvey, maybe even, even some of them, I'd be willing to entertain going on staff. That's not as quick a deal, but owner occupied, definitely.
Initial four.
Yeah, I'm probably okay with the one step as long as it's gonna be, you know, a mix. You know, sometimes geography plays a bigger part than anything else, so I'm probably okay with that. I, yeah. Yeah, I'd probably not be real excited about going with rental housing at this point in time.
I think, I think you have a consensus staff on that. Charlie?
Perfect. You guys will probably see this in your next meeting, just the update.
I think, let's be specific, so they've got some numbers, but I think you've heard us say we're okay on the rest of them, but the owner occupied, non-negotiable and what would you say, 50%, at least 50% of them, no step?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that.
There you go. Perfect. Any questions? Chad?
Do you know, Commissioner Harvey?
All right.
Okay.
Great. Well, if there anything else from the YouTube? Don't you work with Kraus?
Yeah, I do.
That's how I know you.
Good.
Yeah, so your reputation comes ahead of you.
Good, well, appreciate it. We do a lot in Weaver County, so...
Yeah, you're, you're, you do, you have a good name. We appreciate that. And if this is the gentleman you've chosen to help you and part of your project, you've done a good job with that.
Oh, thank you, yeah, we've had a good experience with the Tolmans, they're good, good people.
Okay, very good, thank you. There's nothing else? All entertain again, a motion to saunter until 2:45.
I'm moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We're happy.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
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 To cease to saunter.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? I were ceasing to saunter and we're moving right on to item six on our agenda today. Discussion regarding late primary residential exemption requests. The greatest assessor in all the land.
Uh, thank you. I'm assuming it's me. John Hulberry. All right, thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate it. So we have a situation, it comes up every year, but for whatever reason, this year it seems more pronounced. Uh, this we've had multiple property owners contacting us requesting that, you know, that they receive their primary residential exemption on their homes. Uh, the, in years past, we were able to grant that via late appeal. About three years ago, Senator Bramble introduced legislation that restricted our ability to do that until the appeal deadline, which this year was September sixteenth. And the reasons for doing that are it's an income tax bill rather than a property tax bill, but the assessors are the ones that ended up taking care of it, so. Uh, we have a bunch of different situations that with things like this, so, oh, excuse me, the residences are taxed as secondary residential for a number of different reasons. You know, we'll contact them and they just ignored the letters. Uh, the ownership changes close to the valuation notice mailing date. Uh, and you know, there's one this year that we just missed it, unfortunately. So the reasons are, you know, a new home was uh, it is the owner's actual primary domicile. Decided some mailing address match, they notified us via their veterans exemption application that it was their primary residential. And uh, we didn't have it in our records until after September sixteenth, which is past the deadline for us to legally make a change. Okay. Uh, another, another reason is, you know, the ownership changed in July and the ownership didn't the new owner didn't receive the valuation notice, so that like often properties up in the valley are secondary residences, they sell, somebody moves in and they wanted to be their primary residence, but they just didn't receive the valuation notice, so they didn't actually receive notification. We did everything right on the county end. We sent it to them, the address that was on file. Uh, but the mailing address hadn't changed yet, all reporters and database. And then, of course, you have the the folks that, you know, we were required by law to send letters, note requesting that they fill out our primary residential declaration. And we do that if the mailing address on the site is addressed don't match, and so we'll we'll send them a letter. Uh, they ignore it, we'll send them a reminder letter, they'll ignore that, we'll send them a final notice letting them know that we've removed the the residential exemption, they ignored that one as well. Then they re- ignore the valuation notice and then all of a sudden in you know, November to February, they say, hey, wait a minute, my tax bill is going up quite a bit, uh, what's going on? So, uh, at this point, the assessing neither the assessor or the treasurer have the right to, I can't change the valuation, or excuse me, the residential exemption status anymore legally. Uh, the treasurer doesn't have the ability to abate the tax, so the only avenue if you choose to take it is for the commission to evade the tax. Does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Okay. So, the only way for you to do it is through fifty-nine-two thirteen forty-seven, if it's in the best interest of the state, the county, and in the best human interest. So you have options as I see them, I'm not the most creative guy in the room certainly, but these are the options that I see, as I see them. Uh, you could do nothing, you could say, well, you know, the law is written this this way uh, for a reason, and we're not going to exercise any options and to uh, reduce anybody's property taxes via abatement. Uh, the, you know, that's your choice, uh, what you are doing is you're telling us to consciously overtax somebody by about eighty-two percent. If we know they live there, we're we're comfortable that they live there. Uh, but it's after that deadline and we can't change it, and so and if you say no, we're not going to abate it, then we're knowing that you're overtaxing them. Uh, you you can agree an abatement is necessary and and approve every request that comes in, as long as the assessor's office is comfortable that this property serves is, somebody's primary domicile could be the owner's, it could be a tenant's. You could approve these on a case by case basis. Um, if he so chose, and so, you know, if the facts line up where, you know, we made a mistake, you would abate it then. If the owner just ignored all of our correspondence, uh, you could say no. Things like that. Uh, that. That option is, you know, which you know, a little bit more of a difficult position, uh, but of course, you know, you've decided to run for commission. So responsibility is. Responsibility does go with that. You know? So. Um. So you can take that on as well, you know, and just approve it on a case by case basis. Uh. What I would suggest is, you know, if, if you do choose to. Abate it, you only approve for the current year. And if it's, you know, if we're notified by a certain deadline that, that you would choose. Uh, the old rule was the tax commission rule where we can approve a, excuse me, make a change for a factual error up to March thirty first. Uh, but there's nothing really guiding you or restricting you from doing anything with a property tax abatement. So we're, we're just looking for some.
Does that conclude your presentation today, Mr. Hughery Perry?
It, that's the beginning of the discussion. Yes, sir.
So question. Before we get go, uh. Of the solutions you presented, let's take those and put those aside of the. Problems or situations you presented at first. If you do one, do you have to do them all?
That's up to you.
Okay, so we don't have, okay.
Can be case by case. You're saying if you approve one, does that mean you're sending the other?
I'm a little more sensitive to the people who may have bought the home and didn't get the transactions or the notices there. But the people who've received four different notices. I E. The first, the second, the final, the evaluation, and then finally, I don't have a lot of sympathy there. I can't. Think of a situation, they obviously get the final tax bill. Come on in. They obviously get the final tax bill, but they don't. But, and, but they didn't get the other one. I don't think there's an argument that, because they would have got the evaluation. They would have got, they just chose not to. I want to, I mean, wow, I don't know. Those are my thoughts.
Is this the Weaver State student one? The one that's you're saying they got all these?
We have situations like that.
And did they say that they didn't ever, they had moved a bunch? They didn't, I mean, they got mailed to the address.
There is one particular situation that Linnell is referring to where. We mailed them notices. They moved twice. They moved out of state and then they moved twice. So they, according to them, they didn't receive the, the notification that, hey, or the request for the declaration. Uh, but we didn't do anything wrong. I mean, that's, that's the mailing address that they left for us. And we don't have any way of verifying or refuting their statement either.
How many do we, how many are you talking about total cases?
Uh, right now we have about a half a dozen.
Six. I'm gonna count that as six. Okay. Well, that's, you know, six to one, half dozen of the other.
That's what they say in poker. Yeah.
Okay.
How late will you, will you still get those?
We'll receive them for months. Yeah. As a matter of fact, we'll get, we'll probably get somebody three years from now saying, hey, by the way, I didn't. I just barely noticed that I'm being taxed as secondary rather than primary. And I believe that's the reason that the commission has the ordinance that says we won't consider changing the. The, what's the exact phrasing?
It says the county will not change the taxable status of a parcel of property for a previous tax year. Unless a timely appeal is filed with the Board of Equalization.
I like that. Come on in, hey.
I'm sorry.
That would make sense. We, we don't want to be going back three or four years. That, that makes zero sense. Now. If I might, please, right away. So. You know. Obviously, if it's our mistake, I mean, we can break this into categories. So I guess what I'm saying, I'm. I'm probably headed down the path of case by case basis. If somebody. Repeating what Commissioner Hardy said, if somebody ignores those notices. And we can show, hey, we delivered it to your front door. You ignored it, ignored it. I don't have a lot of sympathy for those people. If, you know, there, there's got to be other reasons like the one you stated that probably makes more sense. But I think it should be very clear that we're all, if we're going to evade it, we only evade it for. The year of the, this year's taxes, current year. I, after that, you're out of luck. Hey, you should, should have looked at it before. So. That's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I do agree that we should only be looking at the current year. Um. But I do have a little concern of what you said on the first option. And that is that we would be knowingly overtaxing. Someone. So I don't know what to do about that because it is frustrating. And, and I guess, I guess we never really know. If, if they're ignoring them.
Well, there's no, I don't think there's any malice.
No. But, but, you know, I, it, it's up to them proving or, or trying to plead their case that they haven't seen it.
Well, proving that they've moved too, I think, kind of lets you know there's a good chance maybe they didn't get it. They moved twice in that timeframe.
Saying and showing or proving are two different.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
And, and then you. On the other side, you could always say, well, it's the owner's responsibility to change their mailing address.
Right.
It is.
So it. I, I tend to fall in the camp of, and this is just me personally. And this is a policy decision that this you as a body get to make. Uh, I don't believe in over. I believe you should use your discretion and if we know that it's somebody's primary residence, that you abate the tax. That, that's my personal position.
If we know that.
If, if we know it.
Yeah.
That's why I asked you about those fourth situations. Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
But again, it's completely up to you as a body.
I can buy off on that every time. And I don't want to knowingly overtax or overcharge.
And, and it does make it easier because it's the decision is binary. It's either yes or no, you know. Do we know it's their primary residence? Yes. Okay. You would abate the tax. Uh, we don't know, or the answer is no, then you wouldn't.
Yeah.
It makes it a lot easier than analyzing each one and, and hearing the story and deciding if the story is true.
Yeah, but again, you'll, you'll hear a thousand exceptions to this, you know, to the rule. I mean, do, how many? Different cases have we seen over the last fifteen years of people? Punging after the fact where they. You know, they, they have a reason and it, and it sounds perfectly plausible.
But it does sound like you're willing to look at the current year. If somebody sat on it, and I have heard people in the treasurer's offices said. This is being taxed as a secondary residence. We've lived there. I mean, they've gone back three years and they paid the taxes. So I'm like, too bad.
Well, don't we go back even for?
Well, I believe that's what the ordinance is, is you don't do that anymore.
We don't.
Yeah, you, you don't do it for, or you won't change the.
We won't change the tax. Yeah, the ordinance says if there is. A refund that's authorized by state law and granted by the county, it shall be limited to a maximum of four years.
And we've gone to four years. In Dave's shoe.
There have been cases where you found four years. Yes.
Yeah.
So what was the part you were saying about the current year that it was all?
That is the taxable status.
That's the primary versus secondary.
So we can't go back on a primary secondary on a prior year?
To actually change the status in the system? No, but. Abating the tax, but leaving the status the same would be allowed by this.
Okay.
So this, so we could go to four years if we wanted to.
Yes. I, I mean, the status would still show. Secondary residence, but you could potentially abate the tax.
Yeah, I have a problem with. You know, more than the current year. Just, you know, if they, they look at their tax notice. They could see that, okay, this is out of, you know, seems to be out of bounds. Maybe we should talk to somebody. And then when it gets to be their schedule, four years later, let's go in and. Yeah. Hammer poor John and John. I, yeah, I.
We had, we had the one that went to the commission meeting and. We recommended the one year and then you guys did the two, but that was the max that we've had in my ten, tenure here was. On when looking at primary versus secondary, they allowed the two-year one time.
Two-year additional, two additional years?
No, just the current year and prior year. But normal other than that, there's always been the current year. That we dealt with, other than the one was the current year and prior.
Seen the guy that lost his shovel? No, that was a different guy.
A, a lot of the ones where you've gone back four years have been more of a.
Boundary change.
A factual error and the description of the house.
The house too large.
Something like that. Those have been the more routine things where you've gone back four years.
Yes.
Well, there might be, yeah, there might be occasion for that. If we've made the mistake on square footage or, you know, hey, you guys messed up the value.
Agreed.
Then. I'm not saying we count that out, but I'm saying if, if it has to do with the residential exemption. They should pay attention to that.
Agreed. Okay, that's all we were looking for is just some guidance on how we should proceed.
Does that help you? Is it clear enough or still?
Perfectly clear.
Okay, perfectly clear.
Perfectly clear. Okay, so.
As far as the process is concerned, and maybe you're going to get to this, but the. The determination of do we believe whether or not it's an actual primary residence is made by the assessor.
Correct, yep. And then if you still wanted to go through tax review for a recommendation and then we'll let them know what, you know, what the general guidance is. And then present it to you once a month or.
Yeah, I mean, I think you guys need to sit down with them and come to us and say, look, this. Really looks legitimate or, hey, you know, we messed up, so we'd give it to them. Uh, or this guy's up in the night. We need your, at least I would like to have your input, you know, you're the one sitting down with them across the table.
Okay. All right. Happy to do that. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, man, you are good. All right, best in all the lands. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry for my shortiness. I apologize.
Dee Dee, hold on before you go.
What did I do? They hit the hug. My guess.
Your daughter still collect these?
Monica's daughter does. I'll take them.
Yeah, we got a full pot over there.
Oh, why am I in the corner?
Yeah, yeah. That's fine.
UT evidence.
Good, it was actually.
Okay, for the transportation.
Yes.
So UTA. You say a hundred percent. So then. The roads were thirty-four percent.
You heard about Chris Royd's life? So, so let me look what I sent you. I don't remember. So he, he was on the earlier flights on the thing.
Okay, we're back to item numbers three or seven. It's three o'clock-ish. And discussion regarding the third quarter financial statements and related budget changes. Mr. Scott Park. Uh, Stephanie Ebert and we'll, uh, hope that Mr. Hatch can come up from the election portion of this. Boy, they're humming down there today.
I just got a text from him saying that they were busy and wanting people to come down. So I don't know if he'll be up.
Yeah, I don't think he's going to make it, but he was okay with this proceeding.
Okay, good. Please go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, we do this every quarter. We're required by statute to, uh, present to you the financial statement.
We obeyed it statutes, just in case you're wondering.
Not me.
Yeah, it's a shell.
And I know it's your favorite time of year because you haven't dealt with budgets enough and you really want to dive into some financials. So.
I think that's exciting for us. You may think that we're. We are.
You know, it's exciting for me too. So I'm glad we're all excited. So we'll, we'll just jump right into it then. If you're okay with your order, I'm going to go over the third quarter financials first, then we'll hit the budget changes and, and, and go from there. So. This is the same slide I love to show every year. Unemployment three point nine percent now in Weaver County, up from three percent a year ago. Um, the cost of. The employment cost index. So that's all the costs, including COLAs, benefits and all that sorts of stuff. We're stabilizing a bit. Um. We follow the national trend, but we're still a little bit above it. So it's still costing us on average five percent more per year. So that would be COLAs. Um, any increases in pay. Plus insurance increases. So this is the mountain region altogether. So when you look and say, okay, well, Weaver County's. Giving a three and a half percent COLA on our insurance rates, one up nine percent. You look at the total cost where. We're in line. Our insurance is a little bit higher, but we're in line with everybody else. So we're not.
Five percent. Average.
Well, so we're doing three and a half percent COLA.
No, but if you look at the intermountain.
Yeah, yeah. If you look at the intermountain area, yes. So with our insurance, we're a little bit above that average, but. We, we have those discussions. It's not anything we can control in the short run, but otherwise we would be right where we should be.
Yeah.
So we're not giving, we're not lagging behind the market significantly. We're not ahead of the market significantly, which is what I'm trying to show here. Okay, next one, inflation. So we have stabilized. I mean, we had a wild ride. Uh, back twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, all the way through twenty twenty-three. Um, but if you look at the average in that red, it's just over three percent. If you look at the average from, um, twenty twenty-four, we're actually in the twos. So, uh.
Here's the thing though, Scott, on that, you showed that inflation going up. But that, that's the rate of inflation as it was before. If you had something that was costing you four bucks. Now it's costing you six bucks. And now it's going to cost you another. Couple of percent. It's still six bucks. It didn't go back down. That looks like, that just grab looks like the, the price. The price didn't go down.
I like to say this is kind of like your speedometer. So we were going really, really fast and now we've slowed down, but we're still moving away from where we started.
Yeah, that's right.
You're right. Price, we haven't turned around and coming back.
We started off at the higher level. Now it's just increasing at a decreasing rate.
We're still moving forward, just not speeding as fast as we were.
As my economic professor used to tell me.
Yep. Yep. So.
Increasing at a decreasing rate.
But, uh, if we can stabilize around two or three percent, that's where we were when I first started, you know, ten years ago. That's where we were for the last decade prior to this craziness. Um. You know, getting back to the nineties and eighties, the interest rates were different. So hopefully we have this period of stability for the next little bit. It'd be nice. Um, we'll see if it happens.
I think you're going to be happy with it.
I hope so. We've dumped so much money in the economy lately that I still see that there's a lot of slack in there. At least some of the advisor, uh. Financial advisors and economic forecasters say we still have. A bunch of money that's been authorized but not yet spent. So you look at us, we still have some of that ARPA cash in reserve. Um, so there's still a little bit more to go. I still think. I don't know. I don't see construction prices coming down or even stabilizing in the near run.
No, I don't. I don't disagree with that.
But, but again, I, I'm going off of the, the experts and so if they're wrong, I'm wrong.
But you saw the chart where if you look at the savings. The average household savings where it was back in that inflation is now gone from. The blue to the red.
Yeah, positive to negative. So we're.
But that's, I, I think that's household savings, not necessarily. What the full picture would be.
True, but it means a credit card debt, and this was just anecdotally, you know, credit card debt has reached its highest level ever. Now, I don't know if they always do that inflation adjusted or not on the news. You can't always tell, but.
Is that right?
Yeah.
That's sad.
It, it is. But, uh, yeah. Got to have it now, right? I need it tomorrow. I can get it today if I order before three.
I wonder if it happened till, wait till Christmas. If I take it eighteen percent on my credit.
Yeah. But it's free shipping.
That's not the environment today.
There you go. You know, you're always coming up with a silver lining.
Um, so.
If you got a mustard colored coat, you're going to come up with a silver lining.
You know, we, it is what it is.
Jessica, let that be a lesson to you.
We, uh, our sales tax, so we projected four percent for this year. I've updated these through the collections in September. We're at three and a half percent. I still think we'll end somewhere between three and a half and four. I don't think that we need to adjust our forecast down or make any cuts to our budget. Our.
Do you think we're going to have a strong fourth quarter?
I'm not worried about not having a strong fourth quarter. As long as we're at three and a half percent, that's within our margin of error. We have enough in our savings account. We have enough with budgetary savings that. We can absorb a half a percent. We can even absorb a percent without really any issues.
Okay.
Um, so I'm not projecting a strong fourth quarter. I'm just saying, even if we don't have a strong fourth quarter, as long as you don't have a horrible fourth.
It won't take us, it won't, unless the whole thing tanks.
Sure, but if we have another COVID type thing, then I'll come back to you and say, hey, we need to do something.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So this is just kind of a snapshot of revenues across the board. So general fund, we're at thirty-three percent of our. Okay, so this is just kind of a snapshot of revenues across the board. So, general fund, we're at thirty-three percent of our budgeted revenues, down a little bit from prior years. I'm not super worried about that. Um, a lot of that is timing, um, and how we forecast grants and grant reimbursements and when our property tax comes in. So, in the next you know, sixty days, that number's gonna shoot up. We get most of our revenue in November, December, when John Bond collects his taxes and gives them to us. Culture Parks and Rec, we're, we're about normal. I'm not worried about that one at all. And the Municipal Services Fund, um, we're down a little bit, but still where we should be for this year, sixty percent is fine. So, um, short way of saying, or that's a long way of saying, I'm not really worried about any of the revenues. I think our collections are coming in.
This doesn't show TCG yet, does it?
Uh, through September, um, I would have to go back to see if they had posted that. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. Would you mind writing that down, Steph? Let's, I'll just go back and check.
That's a big number. Yeah, a million bucks.
Um, it's consistent with, I mean, and that's a big share of their revenues, and they usually are a little bit delayed in getting everything recorded.
That's why I'm asking. It ended about the, you know, middle of September, middle of the third twentieth, somewhere in there.
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes if they post that a, a week or two late, then it'll go on that next month set, and that's.
We may see it in October then.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the expenditure side, salaries and benefits, we're right where we should be. Travel and training, we're up a little bit. It's not a significant portion of the budget, but we've just had more conferences, and we're actually spending a little more of the budget than we had in previous years. Equipment and debt, I really don't worry too much about that because it's it's items of equipment. So, I go buy one piece of equipment, and I can go from ten percent of my budget to ninety percent of my budget with one purchase. But we're still, we're tracking that. We watch that just to make sure we're not going over budget. I'm not worried about it. And current expenses are right in line with where we would expect to be. We're three quarters of the way through the year. We've spent three quarters essentially of our budget. And then finally, our enterprise funds. So, our transfer station, um, we haven't recorded depreciation expense, which we don't do till the end of the year. So, that, that's two point seven, looks great. Well, actually, we're about eight hundred thousand, maybe nine hundred thousand less than that because I have my depreciation expense. Um, but we don't post that till the end. Animal shelter, um, so far, so good, but we have some, um, big expenses that are coming with the donations, and we'll talk about that in just a bit. And then the garage, um, we're down just a little bit, but I'm not worried about that. Six thousand dollars out of six hundred thousand dollars of revenue. Um, as long as we're bouncing around zero, that's fine. So, I'm not worried about that at all. Any questions on this one specifically? Okay, that was the quick quick version of it. Um, the state prescribes a format that I I sometimes email out to you and sometimes I don't, because I don't know how helpful it is, but it's basically the same thing, and I'm just gonna expand it out of see if you can get it. It's just so hard to read. Um, but it's basically the same thing where we go through in more detail. We look at every type of revenue. We look at the different types of expenses. We look at anything that's a big change. We find out the reasons for it, and then we also go through department by department and look at their expenses compared to where they were this time last year. And we do a detailed dive into the revenues just to make sure that we're if there's any variations, we can explain what it is. So, this is a more detailed version of the slides that I just showed you, and I can email this out. I don't know if Commissioner Bowles, now that we have an accountant on the the commission staff, right? I don't know if you want one of these. We, I haven't sent them out as often, but uh, but if you ever have any questions, as a detail, you know, we can drill into it. When I look at the Municipal Services Fund that I have to move. Sorry. I have a little bar in the way. There we go. So, if you look at our Municipal Services Fund, you can see our licenses and fees were up pretty high. We're to hundred and four percent of our budget. That's primarily building inspection revenue. When you look at our charges for services down a little bit, actually, we're right in line with where we expect to be for our budget. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we had a lot of money come into our roads department for flood control. So, we were further ahead in our budget in twenty twenty-three. So, so you see those two big, uh, those little red asterisks. Those were the two big swings. We look through there, and we, we make sure that we understand what they are. We do the same thing on the expenditure side. So, I'm just trying to give you some reassurance of, of what we're doing, that we watch this really carefully, and we try to follow up. Um, so if you ever have any specific questions on that, I'm happy to address any of them. But unless you have any specific questions, I'm ready to move on to the budget changes.
Any questions, Commissioner Bowles, Commissioner Flor? No, let's move on. Looks good.
Okay.
Looks good. Thanks, Scott.
So, you've seen these budget changes, most of these before. The ones in yellow, I have in my hand right here, and I was gonna talk through those, but primarily, we've got grants that come in. I mean, you can see a lot of these are from the Health Department. Grants coming in and with revenues and then the corresponding expenditures. Um, they have to balance their fund in the long run. They've got plenty of money in reserve, so I'm not really worried about them, and you've seen them all. So, unless you have a specific question, I'll just go to the newer ones. Uh, the Animal Shelter Improvement Fund, that's the hundred thousand dollar donation that came in, so we're budgeting to spend ninety-eight thousand dollars of that this year. One you have not yet seen is this new Homeland Security Grant, and that's revenue neutral, as in it's not gonna require any draw of fund balance. Um, and it is, Steph, if you wanted, I don't know if you know more about it. I have the, the detail here, but it's just another grant in my mind, so I don't.
Yeah, they receive an SHSP grant every year, and it starts in September. And so, they just received the grant award document, uh, for the twenty twenty-five year. They just received that like last last week, I think.
Yeah, it was just last week.
And so, this is just increasing our revenues to account for that, and then increasing the expenditures. Uh, we have three quarter, three months for the rest of this year that they can spend it, and then all of next year. So, we just put the whole thing in. I think that's what they're using to fund some of that, uh, Everbridge contract that they just signed.
Yeah.
So.
So, I have that here, Commissioners. If you're okay with this grant, I'll have you sign the budget change. Normally, we do it through Kiss for a little bit. I thought, well, we've got enough of them here. I'll just end them out. Um, so there's that first one, which is just receiving grant revenue and expenses. Um, I got a couple more budget changes here. So, um, CSI, we're looking at their overtime, and they're working through holidays. They're working late hours. Um, they're busy. Uh, we charge the cities, including the unincorporated area, for those expenses, and so it'll be delayed. So, we're gonna give them a budget change here. They need another sixty-three thousand dollars to get through the year. We'll add that to the pot to be built in the next fiscal year. So, we will get all this money back. It just takes us between six months and, and a year, depending on where we are in the billing cycle.
So, it basically goes to contract cities.
Yeah, it'll go to the contract cities. So, we basically, we're gonna adjust, say, okay, we budgeted a million dollars. It's actually a million sixty-three, so that's sixty-three thousand. We're gonna add and, and build that later on.
When we say contract cities, that's every city within Weaver County. So, they, Ogden City, Pleasantly Roy, South Ogden Riverdale, they all pay as part of the CSI contract.
Oh, okay.
So, that's all of them.
So, it's not just the contract, okay.
Including Weaver County and the cities that, that contract for enforcement.
So, makes sense. Yeah, and I'm meeting with the, the chiefs from the different cities, with the sheriff next week, next Wednesday, to go over just why, so we're gonna raise the budget. We projected a little bit higher, so we're gonna raise the budget for next year to have um, a little bit more and overtime, so they'll see a little bit of an increase for that. But that's, that's the reason why is we're actually using it. I mean, we're, we're working, so. Okay, the next one, um, is the animal control overtime, and that's basically the same thing. We went back, we looked at our animal control, and they're going out on services. This will be, um, we'll have to bill this to those cities that contract for animal control services, not animal shelter, but animal control, which is an even smaller population, yes.
So, so how are you coming, by the way, on the side of that, Sheriff? How are you coming about the clean? This is animal, animal services. How are you coming with bidding that out?
Chad's gonna start working on RFP, I think. The initial bid that he got was really high. Did you hear about that?
I did see it, but they were bidding, I think, overbidding the services that we needed, but I wasn't, yeah.
So, gives us a starting point.
Okay. You're double, triple?
Of what we have? Oh, double.
Yeah, um, but it was interesting that it was, I mean, Chad had asked for full-time staff that equated to essentially what the amount was, so full-time staff or, or contracted services, it would have been the same, and that was their worst-case scenario. So, I looked at it and thought it was positive. I know Chad was not quite as happy on that. I mean, I, I, I would think we can get a lower.
He's requested full-time staff, five positions he didn't get.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Like, so when he was requesting, it's not like the, the amount that it came back wasn't anymore. So, it's no worse.
Five full-time staff.
Yeah, but I think we could get it cheaper than that, because I don't think we need them there eight hours a day doing, because they're not spending that much time now.
No, I agree.
Sorry, but that, that's, that's a little bit separate than this. This is just the overtime for the animal control officers, so not the animal shelter. It's gonna be twenty thousand dollars. We're gonna have to add that to our contracts for the July twenty twenty-five through June twenty twenty-six. So, yes, we'll get the money back, but it will be a little delayed. I'm not worried about it. We've got plenty of money in our fund balance to cover twenty thousand in the short run. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
And that's this one right here. Okay. The next two. Did I? Oh, I didn't give you the CSI. Here's the CSI one, sorry.
You gave us one.
I gave you one so far, which was the, uh, grant. So, these are the two overtime. So, these next two, they're gonna be fun. They're, um.
Let's talk fun.
These are, these are, um, auditors like to be auditors, and they, I don't know how else to say it. I mean, I used to be an auditor, so I'm not too critical of them, but we have, um, our special assessment bond up at Powder Mountain. And whenever a homeowner that's buying that property, they don't wanna be encumbered with, uh, a special assessment, so they're usually wealthy enough that they can just pay it off. And so, they do. Not all of them, but a good share of them do. We have no idea how many people are going to pay it off, but every time they pay it off, we're obligated by the indenture to take that money and give it to the trustee. So, we have an extra revenue and an extra expense, right? So, we have no control over it. However, we have to know at the beginning of the year how much that is. Otherwise, we have to amend our budget. You know, and we got in trouble, not trouble. Our auditors last year said, hey, are you, where you exceeded your budget? I'm like, yes, I have to, because that's what the, the, the indenture says. It was like, well, you still exceeded your budget, and they wrote us that finding um, for the, uh, special assessment revenue, and also for our CRA property tax revenue, the money we collected, we just have to then ship out. So, what I did this year is I we do our best guess every year. Um, I went back and I've added some additional margin of error, so an extra three hundred thousand dollars for special assessment payments, an extra five hundred thousand dollars for property tax. I don't think we'll actually get that much, but I'm putting it on there because I want room in case we do, so we don't get another audit finding. But I've included language on there that author has you authorize me to adjust it to be whatever the actual amount is. So, if the actual amount is less than three hundred thousand, then the budget is less than three hundred thousand. If the actual amount is more than three hundred thousand, then it's whatever that number is. So, basically, I want the budget to be a variable budget that is whatever you're required, whatever you collected, you're required to give the indenture, that's what you're, that's what you have to do, no more, no less. So, I don't have any extra fluff in there. I don't have any shortages in there. It's whatever it is to the penny. That's what you got. That's what you pay. Does that make sense? So, a very variable budget. So, if you're okay with that concept, I put in right here, just because I, I need a number. I put in five hundred thousand and three hundred thousand. Uh, but it will be adjusted on December thirty-first to be whatever the actual collections were, no more, no less.
You'll know by December thirty-first.
I'll know two weeks later.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll go back and adjust. I post the budget two weeks, adjustment two weeks behind me, yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, I know. I don't stay on December thirty-first to see.
That's a part way to do that. Variable budget. I like that.
Are we allowed to do that? The state has the dedicated credit concept. It's similar to that.
We just use dedicated, dedicated credits at the, dedicated credits.
Yeah, we don't have anything like that in our policy for dedicated credit. So, this is, but it's not unprecedented. This is, state does something similar to this, yes. Okay. And the last one, so a little bit of housekeeping on there. So, the tourism fund, I talked to Marty. We're borrowing up to eleven million dollars on the line of credit for the conference center. So, I, I've been having these conversations with Marty, and I said, Marty, we have some fund balance in our tourism, and I can either use that fund balance to do your OECD and your ICH and all your other regular repairs and, and capital investments, but that means you have a higher debt balance, or you can pay more money now and have a lower debt balance and a lower annual payment. So, do you want, do you want a high annual payment, or do you want a low annual payment? It's what I asked him, basically, you know, on this, on this line of credit. And he said, I don't want a high annual payment. I want a low payment as I can. So, this, what I'm proposing here is to transfer seven point five million, which is essentially all of that excess tourism fund money to the capital projects money to pay down the line of credit. That eleven, should be close to eleven million by the end of the year. We're hoping to pay off seven point five million of that. So, that, that's what this transfer is, and that's good. That means he doesn't quite have as much in his fund balance to do projects now, but he has a lower debt payment, so he'll have more money in future years. So, that was his recommendation, was to pay off as much of that as he could right now, and not, because we have a ten-year timeframe. If I didn't pay it off, I could hit him for a million or two million dollars each year, but that basically wipes out all this money. Yeah, so I, I think it's wise, minimizes the interest that he pays, and you know, he just has to be lean for a year or so, let's see.
On special project.
Yeah.
On special project.
How, how much does that leave him in project?
Yeah, so he had, he took one point two five million this year, and then the seven point five will wipe out that fund balance.
So, that wipes it out.
So, he's got a little bit of contingency in there, but he's hoping next year that we'll have another million and a half, that he doesn't have to pay for debt payments that he could use next year. So, he's willing, but basically, we're almost going pay as you go for the next little bit as we start to build that fund balance.
Instead of making debt payments, he's yeah, which is a good idea. Oh, I, well, that was, I'd go that way. And that's the whole reason we wanted him to have some control over the budget too. That's working out, so you help, you help build that. That's great.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's
It's smart.
The way he's doing it, yep. Um, and as part of that, we guesstimated what we thought the, uh, OECD would spend this year for the renovation, how much of the eleven million dollar, or I guess the whole twenty million dollar project that's spent in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Um, they're just going faster than I thought they would, so that's not a bad thing.
No.
Um, so what I'd like to do is move the remaining six million dollars that I didn't budget for the whole project and just sweep it into twenty twenty-four, and whatever we don't spend in twenty twenty-four, I'll roll to twenty twenty-five. That way, we're not worried about running out of money. You know, because we budgeted this much, but I said it this much in year one and this much in year two. I'm just throwing it all to year one. Whatever's left, I'll roll to year two.
We're expecting it to be less than six million though.
Um, that's just whatever the difference was between the nineteen million that we had appropriated, minus what I had already budgeted in twenty twenty-four.
So, that's just, that's just a budget number.
Yeah, it's just a budget number. So, the total budget is the same.
Okay.
We haven't authorized a penny more for the project. It's just the timing of when the money's gonna go out the door.
Okay.
So, we were trying to guess to make our, our numbers a little bit better, but sometimes it's easier just to budget the whole thing in year one, even though I know some of it's gonna spill into year two. Because if I'm wrong, I get in trouble for going over budget. So, that's what this budget change is here.
There you go, conference center. Mr. CC.
Steve C.
Commissioners, you will see, um, on the agenda for tomorrow's commission, um, meeting, a, a request to approve the tentative budget, which I sent out the additional request earlier today.
Yes.
And you'll also see a public hearing to go over the twenty twenty-four budget changes, the ones we just talked about. So, that's what's gonna happen tomorrow, but I did wanna give you just a sneak peek of the tentative budget file. Um, I highlighted the yellow just to show you. So, this is the you can see that. So, you can see we, this is the two questions I always get asked is, um, what's the COLA or pay-for-performance, and that's usually from employees. And then the other question I get is what's going on with our FTEs? And so, those are the two things I highlighted. This is on the executive summary that's included in that budget book. So, the one point five percent COLA and the two percent pay-for-performance. And also a net increase of approximately, well, of fifteen FTEs is what's being included in the twenty twenty-five budget, and you can see the breakout down below of what those are.
Scott, does that, that include the county safety?
It does not.
Security chief.
That one's still pending. Um, so we told, uh, the sheriff that we're holding that until the final budget.
Oh.
Cause, so it wasn't included in the tentative budget. If we're gonna put it in, we'd have to put it in for the final. We're still hoping to get some, uh, resolution as to how we're gonna split or share, or what we're gonna do with that position, right?
What are your thoughts on that?
I don't think we're gonna get much.
I don't think we are either. I mean, we we met with him and Ryan Wilcox last week. Who else was there? The state, the state security chief.
Yeah, security.
And I mean, at, at one point in the conversation, he said, I don't, I don't see why you would wanna split this off. You're, you know, a big enough county. And then later in the conversation, Ryan Wilcox said something about Morgan. I mean, you look at Morgan, and they might partner with Davis or that's what we were talking about thirty minutes earlier.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
If anything, maybe we have to fund the FTE, but maybe we could get some revenue from Morgan or from.
That's probably.
Yeah, I think we'll be funding the FTE.
Yeah.
For sure.
Just so you know, that's probably what's gonna happen.
Yeah, so these are, and I don't know if you can see that. I don't know how to make it bigger.
We also, there's one more thing too, Scott. We talked about a, a used truck for, uh, Cooper for the, uh, Wildland Forestry. You were in on that meeting. The, the Wildland Forestry, Wildland, Rick Cooper. He's with Wildland Forestry. You were here on that, and you said we could take a surplus truck and put it in on Cooper.
Mm-hmm.
Remember? Huh?
It might have been Jason.
Oh, it might have been Jason. Oh, it might have been Jason Horn. Will you have a conversation with Jason Horn about that?
I will.
Wildland Forestry.
What's he looking for?
Captain Rick Cooper. What we, you were, maybe you weren't here.
I don't remember this conversation.
You might have been.
He might have been gone.
In Australia. He came in and made the presentation and basically we would fund him a truck that was going to be. Surplus and then every, and then every so many years, get that back in surplus that just letting him use it for a year or two. And surplus or something like that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll reach out to Jason.
It just delays that process. Jason had a pretty good answer for us on that, how that could happen.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could make it happen.
I'm glad, I'm glad we brought that up because I, I, I thought about that a couple of times. Oh, I gotta make sure Scott Park knows about that person there. Okay.
Um, so just as an FY, if you flip it on this sheet to the other, to the backside. You can see Weber County, now we're about a three hundred million dollar entity. So when I started, we were about a two hundred and thirty million dollar entity. Now we're about three hundred million dollars of expenses in a year if you don't count the health department, three hundred and seventeen million if you do.
So how much if we don't?
Three hundred million if you don't count, three hundred and seventeen if you do.
Okay.
So that's just the summary that will go out in the document you'll see tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, the things that we still have pending that were not included in the tentative budget. So it includes um, this lieutenant position for that House Bill eighty four. Um, it includes, it included a full COLA and pay for performance for all elected officials. We had some discussions whether we wanted. The elected officials to get the pay for performance or not. We still have to finish that conversation for the final budget. Uh, we are waiting on the case manager in corrections. We were hoping to see if we could fund that position out of opioids.
I think we were talking about a COLA but no raise.
We, we discussed it, but we never finalized the, the conversation.
Included right now.
All of us here.
All, everybody's included.
No pay raises for the elected, right?
No, the tentative budget has pay raises for all.
Okay.
But that's, that's a question I have. Do I need to pull that out for the final?
All right.
Yeah, I thought we talked about keeping the COLA in, but taking out the pay for performance.
He's just included all of it for the, for the tentative. Is that a conversation that we need to have with that?
So, cause the question was, because the three commissioners seemed on board with that, that we didn't know whether that was going to apply to the other electives.
Yeah, that's. We probably ought to have that discussion.
That's what, that's a good idea.
Ask Ricky when his next launches.
Yeah, so because I, because I didn't know whether it was all electeds or just the three of you not getting it, I just left it in for everybody thinking we. We're happy to pull it out of the budget for final.
Well, we can pull it out, fine.
Yeah, easily done.
After we have those discussions.
Yep. Um, and then um, the last thing that we're gonna do is sewer fee increase. So I'm, I'm thinking about forty five dollars. We'll include that as part of the final budget.
Right.
Um, but I'm just working on.
That's what you remember, isn't it?
Yeah, and it just, we just didn't decide it soon enough to get it into the tentative budget. So that's, those are the things that are pending. And then anything else that pops up in the next week or two is people will get the budgets and let me know if we've made any mistakes.
Did you skip over the second to last one?
Um, so that's the, we were working health department is supposed to estimate their fine revenue. Um, you know how they collect fines every year, but they, they always budgeted zero.
Yeah.
Cause they don't wanna show the, or the public to think that they're expecting the fine revenue to fund them. But I asked them to go back and put that in anyway. So it's a revenue item. It's not like we have to authorize the expense. It's just a better guess of what's gonna come in.
What's the status of their um. They were called Ricks in the resource integration culture. They call them something over there and they, those.
Yeah.
In June, right?
Yeah, the old COE grant.
So none of that's included in the budget for half a year, I guess.
Yeah, they budgeted those individuals for half a year.
Okay. Okay.
And are looking for revenue to try to extend them.
So the, the tentative budget has half a year.
Tend of the budget comes for half a year, yeah. And if they find another grant, then we'll have to do a budget change to approve that grant and the expenses. Cause right now, we're showing them at the end of June. They have to either move to a different grant or their, their position goes away.
Yeah.
Which, which they understood that.
Yes, yes, everybody understood that.
I think all the grant employees understand that.
Okay, that's all I have, commissioners, unless you have any specific questions.
Questions, Commissioner Bowles. Questions, Commissioner Farrow. Great job. Appreciate that.
Um, oh, where'd that go?
Sorry, I can go back to the work, that little notepad document that I can't make bigger? Yes.
Um, the third one. When will, when will they know about that grant?
The, this one, the case manager. So that is, John Bond is working on this project right here, the opioids. And he, I talked to him last week and he was hoping, he said he had a meeting, is it this week or next week? Um, with everyone to, and he was gonna present his results to you, I think in next work, week's work session.
Next week, I thought he said.
Yeah, I think that's what he said. So it wasn't gonna be done in time for the tentative, but I'll follow up with him and make sure. Um, hopefully a week from today, he'll be presenting to you what his plan is or what he would recommend the plan for you guys to be for opioids.
Okay, so is that position going to be in our budget? And we just don't know if it's gonna be grant or opioid settlement?
Because the other option is that we convert a corrections assistant to be the case manager. And if so, it's already in the budget. There's no need.
A correction assistant?
Convert a vacant correction position, uh, corrections assistant position.
Really?
Into a case manager. Yeah, we said, and that was another option if we couldn't fund it.
Corrections assistant.
Just basically say, we don't need the corrections assistant because we've shut down Twelfth Street. Excuse me, shut down um, Kiesel. Because of that, I don't need all these corrections assistants. Can I take the correctional position assistant, transform it into a case manager, hire a case manager? And I'll have to ask.
That's enough money? Aren't those CAs like?
It's not.
Why?
No, it's, it's less. Um, but usually because he has savings in attrition and so many other positions. And that budget, we don't worry about that too much.
And he's close enough with the.
Okay.
So.
So that, so the tentative budget does not include that, but we expect it to be in the final budget.
We expect it in one form or another, but I don't know whether it's new money or whether it's converted money. So that's why it's not in the final budget. Excuse me, that's why it's not in the tentative budget, but it's on our list of things to finish before the final budget.
But it won't impact the expenses.
Um, if it's opioid, really what'll happen is opioid revenue will go up, rent revenue will go up and opioid and grant related expenses would go up. So there'd be no new draw of fund balance. Or if it's a converted position, there's no new draw of fund balance. So you're right, there's no new draw of fund balance, but the revenues and expenses may either both go up.
Okay.
Or both stay in the system. Yeah.
Great.
That's it.
All right, Stephanie, any other statements or questions?
Your question on whether TCG was included.
Yes.
So it was posted on the ninth, so that was October.
Okay, so it'll be.
With an effective date of nine thirty.
So if it was posted on the ninth, then it would show up.
Okay, so it was like eight hundred and forty two thousand dollars and that should be in those figures that Scott presented to you.
Thank you.
And the, the reason why your, your percentages look a little low on this is because the transfers that make up the shortfall. In Culture Parks and Rec happened at the end of the year when we know what the losses are. So you have.
This is really, doesn't.
The percentages are about right, but you, you never get enough revenues. You know, you budget your transfers and that's thirty percent of your revenues.
Got it.
Okay. All right, any other question, anything else? Okay.
Super. Thank you so much for that great presentation.
Hey, we will clear the room and get ready for whoever's next.
We'll clear the room and get ready who's next. Commissioners, we're about ready to get to item number eight on our agenda, which is a discussion regarding. The sewer service in Western Weber County. Wow. They're the best they'll have.
You decided to get rid of it, right? Is that what?
What I'm still hoping for.
West David will take all of us, right?
Give it to West David.
Overall.
Okay, so do you think, no? And if you intentionally ignore that, that's fine. Just tell me if you don't like that idea.
How you doing?
Well, I think, hey there.
Hey, Kevin. How we doing? I'm doing well. How are you? Good. Don't mind me showing up.
I'm just kinda thinking.
Commissioners, uh, we're on item eight on our agenda for those of you in the room. This is a discussion regarding the sewer system in Western Weber County. Listed today are Sean Wilkinson, Gary Myers, Chad Meyer, Hoppley, and Phil Charlie Hewitt, Rick Grover, and Cammy Amon. Kevin Hall, Central Weaver.
Right.
Stephanie Russell, LMSA.
With that hat on, okay. Kevin, Stefan, Stephanie, Kevin, Stefan, welcome both of you. Let's have Sean, you've got the biggest cheesy grin on your face.
Why don't you lead up? Excited to jump into this, okay. Thank you, commissioners. We have had several discussions going on recently. This has to do with sewer in Western Weber County, west of the river. So as you'll recall, with the Black Pine development going in there, Black Pine is going to build and. Give to Central Weaver a lift station and a main trunk line that will go to Central Weaver's plant. Uh, and they're, they're paying for that. They're taking care of that. But the laterals in that area are going to be the county's responsibility. And that's the way that that was, that development was approved. That is the first development west of the river that the county has allowed. That the county has taken on the sewer. But our plan is, at least as far as we understand it, is not to. Expand that sewer service any further west. We have several developments and specifically three that Central Weaver has brought up to us. Uh, that have recently applied for annexation into the Central Weaver Sewer District. And those are Longhorn. Longhorn or Midas East and West Creek. Those are all.
Those are all west of this.
They are. They're Pat Burns developments. They're all west of this. And they are trying to figure out a sewer solution right now. I know they've had conversations with LMSA, they've had conversations with Central Weaver, but the county right now has told them. That we are not going to expand further west. So we're not going to be the body politic. We're not taking on those laterals. And that's been our stance. So our, our purpose today is to reaffirm that that is correct. From the commission perspective, unless you tell us differently. But our understanding as of right now, what has been told to Pat Burns and others is that the county is not going to be the, the body politic for sewer infrastructure. West of the river, outside of that Black Pine development. So with that being said, Kevin, do you wanna talk about our conversation last week and what you need from the county? If, if indeed that is the case.
Thank you, Commissioner. So uh, last week, Central Weaver had our board meeting. And at that board meeting, the Central Weaver Board was asked to consider annexation of these three developments into.
By the petitioner?
Yes, by the petitioner. And um, Commissioner and Trustee Farrow was there and, and suggested that. By, by accepting the annexation or annexing these properties. Uh, we would be obligating the county in some way to provide that sewer service. And that's uh. Uh, maybe that's, is that an accurate statement, Commissioner?
I would, I didn't say obligated, but it puts us in a liability standpoint for the future. And talking with Mark, the attorney with Central Weaver, agreed I, the, the statute's pretty clear. I don't think that we would be liable to provide it. But here's, you know, here's the details that. Somebody annexes in, this was my presentation or comments, etc. Somebody annexes in with Central Weaver. So they then go out and do their development, bring the miler in the plant, then they now have X number of lots. And we don't have it clearly defined who's going to provide sewer. We just know that Central Weaver has agreed to, to be the treatment. Well, that puts in a question then that I think gets into the legality, that the property gets flipped. And then all of a sudden, they come to Weber County, right or wrong, and saying, look, you know, this property has gone through planning. They've got the annexation. You guys have got to provide sewer. Well, we've talked about this for two years. Weber County, we're trying to get out of the sewer business. You got LMSA here that, in my opinion, is the solution out there. For that ended, for that county.
Yeah.
In conjunction with Central Weaver.
Right.
You know, I think there has to be an interlocal between Central Weaver and LMSA. Oh, to, to get us, when I say us, Weber County unless. There's other thinking. Let the, let the experts that under, you know, that understand and deal with sewer deal with it.
So are you saying just another way to say that is Central Weaver would be the wholesaler?
Correct.
Correct. LMSA would be the retailer.
Right.
And then do all the service for the trunk lines and all that other stuff.
Yes.
Would LMSA take on those laterals?
So right now where we're at with, with that is we've had two work sessions to discuss that. We're in the process of researching what that would cost for LMSA to go into that business and to make sure that it's feasible. But the general consensus with LMSA is that they are willing to do that. We just have some due diligence. We need to finish up before we make a, a, a board vote. The board, the board has not voted on that. But it is absolutely in, in the works and the process of researching and doing feasibility.
So Central Weaver's action was to delay action until the next board meeting on this annexate, on these three annexations. And so that next board, board meeting is in November, November eighteenth, I believe. And uh, as Sean and I discussed it last week, it may strengthen the request to delay annexation. They have some type of action from the commission stating that your intent not to provide that certain, that connection service.
So yeah, so that, if, if our intent is to get out of the sewer business and not provide sewer west of the river for anyone else. Then I think Central Weaver's just asking for some kind of a, a resolution or a letter to that effect from the commission. So that Central Weaver has. Uh, what they need to move forward.
What's your feelings on that, Commissioner Bowles?
I think we do wanna be on the sewer business. I mean, we've been saying that for a long time. So. That's what it takes.
Commissioner Farrow. Yeah, I mean, I, I think Evan knows where I stand, but that you've got LMSA. If anybody's gonna do it, it should be LMSA, or we should contract out with one of the water companies out there. But I don't think it should be us. I don't, you know, we've, we've got our hands forward and it, you know, I think it makes good. Financing decisions, best practices that let LMSA's in the process of doing their tax, through the taxation.
Yeah.
So, L, you know, LMSA's come a long ways over the past two or three years. It was just kind of a hometown. Western Z was the primary user of it out there. Stephanie, with the work, we've got some good people on the board now. That really take, have an interest in that section of the county. So I think we should, and we should let them come up with some type of interlocal. With Central Weaver. So Central Weaver can be the wholesaler, LMSA can be the retailer, and there's a clean. There's a clean division. So when they come to us, rather than whoever may come to us and say, let me put my own lines in. And then Weber County take responsibility. You gotta go through LMSA.
And, and the, and they're the reason that LMSA is very interested in this is that we're partnering with Inland Port to make sure that we're doing the right size infrastructure. Very similar to what you guys did with the PID for Promontory, making sure you have the, the long-term regional sized infrastructure. Instead of having developers come in and put in just these little teeny tiny systems that are gonna connect into Central Weaver. We want to have, we want to make sure that uh, LMSA is, is dedicated to making sure that that development that's happening out in the Western Weaver corridor. Is done right the first time. So we put the right size life, uh, lines in and make sure that it's kind of one entity. Maintaining the lines and then one entity collecting, uh, processing, processing the wastewater. So um, we're, we're really close. We're just, we just have a couple more things we need to do before we can come out and say, yes, this is, this is what the board is. This is the way the board's moving forward. Um, it's just really a matter of time. We're going through a truth and taxation hearing right now. And that will, that should all go fine. And so we'll have the ability to ta, have be a taxing entity uh, come January uh, first. Um, we're in the process of putting some of our fee schedules together and just doing a little more research on what is it actually gonna cost for us to own and operate lines? We're gonna have to hire an engineer. We're gonna have to, you know, there's things we have to put in place. We don't have a chat yet, yet.
I guess somebody bet way better than me.
Um, so, but we're really close. We're really close on, we just got our, we just got our discharge permit just last month. We are now one hundred percent compliant with the state. We've been out of compliance for six years. We've got two major renovation projects going on with our sewer system. So we're close to being able to make that decision. We've just got to tie up. So we're close to being able to make that decision, we've just gotta tie up some loose ends. Um, so that's where we're at.
So, yeah, I, we told, well, the decision of the board is, Pat's got projects he'd like to do. Probably just a little premature in terms of working out the mechanic. Now, one thing we gotta do is talk Central Weaver into taking our ponds out there, which Kevin says he's happy to do that. But we, sorry, we could, I think we need to have that discussion so we can turn treatment completely over to Central Weaver. And then LMSA.
Lines owns.
Does lines only.
Uh huh.
And it's a clean break, I just like.
Sounds well thought out.
If the lines here, then LMSA should do it. We gotta, but we've got a few things to.
Our renovated ponds.
Yeah, so the only, the issue is that we have, the Central Weaver has ninety days to approve the annexation. We have, they have to take some, or to approve or not approve, they have to take action within ninety days, so. I think the, the discussion here is that LMSA and Central Weaver haven't worked out such an interlocal agreement yet. So that's, there's some time needed.
Uh huh.
And so the action that Central Weaver ought to take is, according to, like your recommendation, is that we not annex those properties now. And so that's uh, that's just the discussion we wanted to have.
And I, and I will say, just from an insider standpoint, um, I did receive a draft contract from our LMSA attorney today that we'd like to present, but we still haven't scheduled those meetings to meet with you yet, but it is in the works. And our intent is to have that dialogue with Central Weaver about taking on all the lines and going into an interlocal agreement with them, that's the intent.
It's great.
Yeah, I think it just makes sense, I mean, obviously there's pressure on us saying, okay, let's have him put his lines in and then Weaver County is responsible because LMSA is not at the point right now where they could agree to that. And then the next person comes in and now we're back into the sewer business. It's unfortunate the timing's not, if we're gonna make the break, I'd like to make a clean break. Yeah, does it hurt some people to wait? Yeah, probably does.
And the other thing I'd really like to discourage and is uh have pressure put on the commission to create a, a separate district outside of Central Weaver and LMSA. A governing body, a governing politic, I, I would like to discourage that and just let you know, LMSA really is working towards this goal. We just need more time.
How's that sound to you, Kevin? Exactly what the doctor ordered?
It sounds like all we've been discussing for, for some time now. And uh, and, but this hasn't been presented to the board yet.
Uh huh.
Yeah, like, we're still planning on come, we're still planning on November.
Yes, we're still.
Presentation, and we have a meeting scheduled with our long-range planning committee shortly after to discuss it in, in more details, okay?
So Kevin, what, what do you need from the commission and in what form does that take?
So I don't, I, I guess I should say, I think it will strengthen the request to Central Weaver's entire board. If, if we understand that the commission agrees with this uh strategy to, to not annex.
Can you put together just a little letter?
A resolution?
Liam, maybe a little something that just, some kind of a little letter of intent or.
Yeah, we could just do a resolution.
A resolution, yeah.
Yeah.
You okay with that, Commissioner Bolos?
Yeah, I, I think we should.
There you go.
Yeah, great.
Okay, that worked for you?
That will be great, and uh, we would just need that before our board meeting on November eighteenth.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, we'll get that done quick.
Very good, any other questions, Commissioners?
No.
Okay, well that, there you go, I got that consensus.
Another, could we just ask any comments from planning on any of these things that we've discussed? Okay.
No.
Now, I was just going with the development agreement for the Black Pine project, and it looks like we did agree uh to taking over those laterals if Central Weaver doesn't, so.
Okay, very good.
For Black Pine.
For Black Pine.
But just in my thing though.
That's an option for LMSA to, once.
Let LMSA, what I would want them to take those over.
I agree.
LMSA.
And possibly the lift station too. And lines if you wanted, if you wanted to address that.
We won't complain.
Okay, great. Well, there you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's have a moment to switch out the room.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yes, thank you.
Does that get you what you need?
Yes, yeah, we talked about this after the board meeting, I think.
It's a strength, and that lets you change your air.
Great.
Thank you.
Kevin's a good man, Paul's safe.
Uh, yeah. I cannot do, I'm the same without.
You may be hearing from somebody, Rick. Okay, just a heads up. Are you, are we recording right now?
Can we switch out the room?
Okay, that's, well, let's go, let's continue with our CJC.
We need five minutes, that's it.
Okay, three minutes. You're on. We got the great Rodney Layton.
The great, let's emphasize that.
Okay, great, go ahead.
All I have, and I don't even sure, I have to bring the Scott Mendoza that I did, so there it is. That's the, that's the proposal for the furniture. Um, I guess it does have to go for consent thing, so there it is. Um, we, when you look at that amount, the two hundred and twelve thousand.
Two hundred and fifteen.
Fifteen thousand.
Don't show or change yourself.
Yeah, it's expensive.
I don't wanna. Was this budgeted?
Yes, well, a hundred and fifty thousand was budgeted for uh, uh, from the county side, our side. And then the rest was donated, so I got, I got a fifty and a ten thousand dollar donation. So this, a sixty thousand is actually private money, and we're gonna get more. So you, it's not gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand, but.
You wanna get money, Rob?
I had to get it ordered.
And we're gonna get more.
Okay, do you need me to sign this?
Yeah, you gotta sign it, and I guess it's gotta go, it's gotta go Tuesday. I need to get it locked in so the prices don't go up, but.
These aren't fancy chairs in here, are they?
But we're worried about those eight hundred dollar chairs.
No, eight hundred dollar chairs.
No, there's no eight hundred dollars chairs, but an average office chair is five hundred.
Really?
Yeah, you can't buy anything really. And they're not nothing like this, they're like, I mean, they're nice chairs, but we got the whole painting room. So you got seventy chairs in there, you got tables, you got all kinds of stuff. And this doesn't include the interview rooms, the interview rooms we got. A guy gave me ten thousand for the interview room, so we bought, that's different furniture, that has to come from R.C. Willie.
Let me just tell you something really quick. I went out to another place out there, uh, the old uh, uh, On the Way to Clearfield uh furniture uh big store, just immediately east of the freeway on the, where it goes into Clearfield High School. Uh, for, uh, you know what I'm talking about?
I know where Clearfield High is.
Okay, you take Clearfield High, and if you just go on the other side of the freeway of Clearfield High, there's a furniture place there. Uh, I was amazed, the same exact piece of furniture was forty percent less.
Wow, wow.
Didn't believe it.
Yeah, there is a few.
And I like the R.C. Willie, but the day chart, I'm telling you right now, there, there's a, it was a first, I can't remember the name of that place. Uh, but it was Rod, I, I think it would be, it'd be well-served. You'd get, and they're steel case, they're steel case brand, just like what was on your thing. So some of that furniture is very well-made, it's hardwood and steel and good, and it's real nice.
You don't want me to start over though, Jim?
No. I'm just, no, but I'm just saying, on those interview rooms, on those interview rooms, you may just.
That, yeah, that was a guy that came in and said I wanna buy all the furniture for the interview, and I'm like, I need ten thousand, he wrote me check.
Hmm, great, that's awesome.
Any questions for Mr. Layton?
No.
Okay. Anything?
Good.
Then I'll entertain a motion for item ten.
What's your turn?
Second, second.
All in favor?
All right, where would you like?
Thank you, so where does this go now? Does this go to somewhere?